I'm going to call the June 20th business meeting in Norbert Borough Council to order. Mr. President, we're going to have a listen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, on which it stands, and to the citizens of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, come on roll.
Mr. President Wood.
Here.
Vice President Richards.
Here.
Councilmember Winston. Councilmember Birak.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Godini.
Here.
Councilmember Samuelson.
Here.
Mayor Deutsch.
Here.
My only comments this month are that it's going to be very, very hot on Saturday and Sunday, so please factor that into your planning and be safe. Mayor Deutsch, what do you think?
Yeah, tonight I have a couple. To reiterate, if you can, this weekend, stay hydrated, stay indoors if you have to. If you have neighbors or people in your street who you are concerned about, please check on them, make sure everybody is safe. If you need the police to do a wellness check, we are willing to stop by and do a wellness check for anybody in the neighborhood who you may have some concerns about. So they'll knock on the door and make sure, you know, everything is safe. They're happy to do it. And then a couple other things. The chief of the police department has been working on a couple information items for everybody. You may have seen these flyers up, say, "Stay informed, Norbert." And there's a QR code, and it allows you to sign up to get alerts from the police in real time as you need them. So you can also do it on at norbertpa.gov, which is the borough website. But these are a way to get informed of emergency updates and so everybody can find out about them. Next is, you may have seen, we have some new parking regulations coming into... Come into... I can't speak today. Coming, being enforced as of July 1st. You may have gotten one of these Norbert parking regulations on your vehicle, just informational. If you are in a two-hour regulated zone, you need to get a permit to stay over. And you can, again, use the QR code to be registered, or you can do it through norbertpa.gov. You can sign up on the Norbert Borough website as well. So go ahead and take, get those if you can. And lastly, we have, another announcement. We have July 4th coming up and before our next meeting. So just everybody, there's a lot of very exciting things that we do in the borough. There are daytime activities and evening activities, and all are invited to attend and enjoy. And so I just want to remind everybody, we can also use volunteers. If anybody, if anybody is interested in giving an hour or two during the day or in the evening, we can use as many hands as we have got. So encourage everybody to pitch in and make it a magical experience for everybody. And that's it.
I'll just follow up and say that the parking changes only apply to people who are currently in a two-hour parking zone. And there's some really minor changes that are not going to be noticeable for the rest of the borough. If you live in a two-hour zone already, and you have current parking regulations, you need to get a permit. Everybody else, carry on.
I think before it pointed out, the one thing that is actually more beneficial is it used to be you would only get a permit for your street. People misunderstand this, now that, now you have a permit by zone, so it's actually, right?
Yeah, you'll be allowed to park in other streets in your area, in your zone.
The audience didn't understand that.
It's a new, it's a new thing, so it's going to take some time for everybody to fully be informed. We'll keep repeating it as necessary. Let's move on to the committee reports. Finance and Administration.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, met immediately prior to this meeting, and we have finished our review of rules of council, more or less. We have some, a couple of... We're assembling a list of questions for the solicitor, and we're going to try to make very efficient use of solicitor time and get just some answers, and produce a final draft by the next meeting, which is our goal. We also added to our agenda the review of board commissions with an eye toward keeping them populated with volunteers and rightsizing them. And it's, this was identified on the council goals and objectives list that we passed a month or two ago. So that's something we look forward to doing, got a pretty good handle on that. That's what we're doing.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Mr. Spear? Infrastructure. All right.
So in the interest of time, I'm gonna skip over most of the items because seven of them resulted in motions that will be presented later in tonight's meeting, so it would be redundant to go over them now. The one item I did want to highlight is a project that was initiated by Jeff Eldon, who's the director of Public Works. And he identified an eco grant to replace old fixtures with LEDs in the public workshop and the firehouse. And that was $11,000 in fixtures we got. Also, in AD Windsor, we had all the lights down for the project, and the contractor agreed to put the new LED lights up at no additional cost because they would have had to put the original lights back up. And so kudos to Jeff for discovering that grant and getting all that work done, giving us more modern and energy-efficient lighting.
That sounds great. In keeping with our climate goals as well as saving the borough money, both great things. Thank you, Ira. Let's move on to public health and safety.
Yes, so today we're going to talk about the traffic study at Dudley Empress Avenue. The public health and safety voted to recommend always not there. And then we also voted on the street light at 100 block of Dudley. We're also working on rolling out the single-use product ordinance, which will go into effect in September. So we'll be rolling out communications for that to the Norbert Business Association, and we'll be also distributing sliders to the businesses directly. And we will also be, we're also talking about updating the security camera policy. We talked about the parking, residential parking permit changes. And the police, the police chief also gave an update on school bus camera. They're installing cameras on the school buses to enforce traffic violations with the school buses, and that is expected to roll out in the fall. And I just met with the exit design group and Lower Merion Township about the mainline Greenway implementation. And so we looked at preliminary designs, and we'll be moving forward from that. And then we also got an update from the EAC with the EV charger reports. And we have data for a few of the chargers. And then in a year, we'll take another look at when all of the chargers, when we have the data for all of the chargers that are online. And then today, we got word that the petition has been filed to the PUC for the Community Choice Aggregate. And so I think that's a big, exciting moment for, and a milestone moment for the borough. And so that's the first step to, towards the CCPA. And I think that's, that's it.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Jean. Let's move on to public comments. Public comment is three minutes. Please give your name and your address for making your public comment. And start in the room, front row, if I see you there. Okay, three officers, stand up and get them.
Hi, my name is Ben Green. I live at 206 Price Avenue, which is the north parking neighborhood. I applied for a parking permit and was denied. I follow the rules, all residents, this is not a contest, all residents, sorry. I was denied because my house is on the non-approached side of the street. So what that effectively means is my neighbor across the street has twice as many parking spaces that are eligible than I have. But other than that, I'm not related different than my neighbor. The current neighborhood, the ordinance refers to neighborhood, which is in the resolution you signed back in December. And neighborhood is not beside, is not beside of the street. In fact, you've confirmed that it's a practice that Norbert has, you put, that it's not codified anywhere. Philadelphia actually uses parking zone, which is your residence in the zone. And Lower Merion, I checked, as long as you're a resident of Lower Merion, you can get a parking permit. So what I'm asking the council is to reconsider this practice that is historical. I don't know why, but I'm asking for the opportunity for, sorry, all residents to purchase a parking permit, because that's what this says. We can put it on people's cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joseph Stratton. I live at 402 Dudley Avenue. The reason for my comment is to just express my gratitude and admiration for the Public Health and Safety Committee and the work they do. I've been attending the meetings, the last board meetings, and I've just been so impressed with the diligence, dedication, and thoughtfulness of the committee and everybody who's present for the meetings. I'm sure all the other committees are similar. This is just happens to be one that I attended and wanted to obviously say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Can we just say thank you for coming in, you know? It's, this is a classic example of the public coming forward, presenting us with an issue that we weren't necessarily aware about, you know? And you, your own anecdotal evidence that you gave us, you know, led us to doing the traffic study that confirmed to your own, you know, which was almost identical to what you presented to us. So it really is a great example of, you know, the public informing us of issues that need to be addressed and allowing us to address them. Kudos to you. Mutual admiration society.
Public, any other public comments from in the room? Okay, is there anybody online? If you're online and you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand or otherwise make yourself down, unmute yourself. Last chance for anyone online who wishes to make a public comment. Is there a hand raised? Okay.
I can't see who, but I can see a, yeah, a hand.
Carol Murray, are you here?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to tell you, there's something wrong with the volume in the room because it sounds like you're in a wind tunnel. It's, I can barely hear what y'all are saying. It's all background noise of wind. So just to let you know, I don't know how to fix that, but let you know.
Sorry, it's a continuing issue with the air conditioning. It's much better in the room now, it's much improved. I'm sad to hear that the owl is not working as well. But right now, in the room, I would say it's a, it's not particularly noticeable. But we'll, we'll take that into account and see if there's a setting with the mic or something that we can change. Anyway, go ahead.
All right, thanks. So with my public comment, I want you to know, has anyone on this council or in the borough office had conversations or emails with Ryan Bailey or anyone at Penrose Development about the high-density, low-income housing in Norbert?
I'm not familiar with Mr. Bailey. The discussion was, that has been had is at the planning commission meeting, and I believe you were at that meeting, Carol Murray. That...
Yes, I was.
Is the extent of any official communications? As they did, there was a presentation at the planning commission meeting that was organized by planning commission, not by council.
Is that extending to a council action or a council meeting?
There has been no action taken, and I don't know this person, so.
All right, so then it moves into my, are there any updates or progress on development, conversations with potential developers in the RFP for development on any part of 201 Sabine?
There's been no change, there has been no action taken on 201 Sabine. Well, just leases, we have a lease discussion later today, but there's been no discussion of development.
All right. And then also over at the park side, the stairs at the park side, when the pole was replaced, the light was taken off. So at this moment, there is no street light at the stairs of the park, which is really dangerous because anybody using those stairs at night, it is pitch black. And it also makes the park totally pitch black at night, and it helps hide the kids and teens that are frequenting the park at night now that it's summertime. So we had spoken with Samantha when the LED light conversation was going on to have a second arm put on that light pole so it, so it lights the park, the pad at the park. And I'd just like to let council know, and you know, if that can go through, because we're getting a lot of kids at night, we're getting a lot of activity at night, like late at night, like 10, 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, which we do call the police for when they start to get really, really loud. And, you know, again, on Sabine Avenue, we're having an uptick of cars going the wrong way on the street. Last night, I was driving home, and a car comes zipping down the road the wrong way, and I tried to block it with my car, and all they did was go on the sidewalk to go around me. The police patrol it, but they don't catch the people going the wrong way. So we've asked to have the one-way signs that went missing several years ago replaced, but that hasn't happened. So how about thinking about striking the street on Sabine at Essex and write actually on the street, "Wrong Way," in big reflective letters so people that miss that, the one-way signs, there's no doubt in their mind that they are going the wrong way. I mean, that's, it's getting dangerous with kids and summertime at the park.
All right, thanks for your suggestions.
All right, and then is North Norbert going to be paved? South was paved in, what, about 2018? And I'm wondering, I remember in years past that North Norbert was supposed to be paved, but waiting for utility work to be done, is there a paving schedule for North Norbert?
Council has approved this year's paving, I don't believe we, which is going to be... Everford Ave, yeah. We have not approved a long-term schedule at this point.
When was North Norbert paved last? Like, the whole section of town?
I don't know, and your three minutes has expired, Carol Murray. Thank you. Is there anybody else...
Thank you.
...online who wishes to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand, something. Okay. Let's see anything. And so, Mr. Green, I just do want to reiterate for folks here, you know, you have been in contact with people on council, you've been in contact with the borough manager, so you've gotten extensive back and forth. I think the rule in Norbert has always been that you can't get a parking permit unless you live in an area that has a parking permit.
Practice, sir, you said, what? It was a practice that you've adopted, and it doesn't agree with anything else, doesn't agree with what's in your ordinance, and it doesn't agree with your neighboring council. So I just ask you to relook at it. The word "practice," sir, came from you, not from me. I pulled it out of an email.
Okay. We don't have to match with Lower Merion, but we will take a look and make sure that our ordinances are clear on this.
I'm gonna get tickets, sir.
All right. Let us move on to our presentation item. So we have Mr. McCubrey and Mr. Yoder, if I'm pronouncing your names correctly, from VSPA, who are working on the design of the Norbert Avenue Bridge.
I'm Matthew Yoder.
I'm Dan McCubrey. And this is the first time we've gone old-school since, I think, the pandemic. Unfortunately, it'll be a little hard for the audience to see these, but...
I think the suggestion, the suggestion was over there.
Yeah, the owl can pick it up.
Do you have...
Maybe folks in the public could swing around.
Yeah, if you guys want to come around.
If anybody wants to see is welcome to turn around slightly here.
There's a chair.
And they're also included in the meeting pack.
Right.
Will they come up on the screen?
Yeah, can we share it? Okay, you're not going to see it there.
Oh, I see.
No, no, sit here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Aren't there two cheeses?
I know.
Hopefully the joints won't be this big enough. But I think we've, we've been working on developing the, a heard of it was selected for what we call the trees in the bridge. And at that point, it was the concept of the, or Norbert set over a kind of a leafy, idea of kind of a tree-lined street with, then an overall effect made of a wood block with a wood carving. And we've worked a lot while developing the trees and the scale of the letters. And we've then introduced as a new item, a kind of a tableau at the bottom, which gives it a small-scale element. Originally, it was the trees and the words. It's now a kind of a tableau that runs along the length, starting with the notion of, the notion of Norbert, or from a forest to a farm and then to the town, and then back. And that would relate to the pedestrian scale, where it's bigger and more of the unmoded scale. I think there have been some changes in the bridge. Overall, this part lengthened, and the trees got a little bit shorter to work out the spacing of the letters and the trees themselves. And the trees got a little deeper by eliminating a border that we really, we really didn't need.
Yeah, that was redundant.
So I would say the, working on the graphics of the text of the trees, and then introducing this smaller-scale element that kind of allows us to walk along, would be, would be nice working at both, big scale and small scale. The technique for this, these are castell panels that would be, it would actually be created with a mold that are about six feet by four feet.
Six, four by three, six.
And then looking within the depth of that, we have about an inch, inch and a half that we can work with. Then using different ways of incising into the castell, suggesting sky, landscape, and some of the smaller, the trees, and then the little townscape, which actually has profiles of buildings from Norbert in it.
Have to look closely at it.
Yeah, it's really hard to see from a distance, so.
This is what we presented to the council a few years ago as the approved concept.
Right.
And so this is the evolution of that.
Okay, gotcha.
And we've, so throughout the day, as the sun travels across the sky, the shade and shadow changes, so this will be a dynamic tableau for people to enjoy and observe.
This is actually a 3D model that we've created so that you can see the way the sun, how the sun will affect the shadows.
And we've brought along materials that we've selected for the bridge. This is a brick that we've taken out to the adjacent buildings. So this will be on the bridge itself and the wing walls. And these are examples of the castell material, which is basically a reinforced concrete.
And will Norbert be on both sides? What's the other side?
That's correct. Is it going to be spacing the same direction, the letters? Are they going to run the same way, or are they going to run...
It'll be flipped, so you're reading it up to right, yeah. And then the way the, so the pad, of course, you can get two panels out of one mold, which is, saves a lot of money.
Is there lighting for this also?
There is. Actually, integrated in this railing is down like the wash, this kind of curves over, so maybe you'll be able to see it as well.
Oh, nice.
Also for a little pedestrian safety. And then there are two, there are four tier lights at each corner of the bridge.
Will that, will the concrete material age to a different color, or like, how well will that...
It, it behaves like limestone, pretty much. It's used, it's used a lot in lieu of limestone. It's a little less expensive, but also has the ability to be molded like this. It'll, you know, in some ways, it gets a little better over time because...
That's how I understand it.
It starts settling, you know, sort of help accentuate the relief. Dirt can be a good thing up to a point.
Right, yeah, right. No, that's what I was saying, is like the dirt gets into the crevices, you actually get, accentuates it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it will weather, but it will certainly weather with the lifespan of the bridge.
So as I'm looking at this, it looks like the sidewalk ends somewhere, like two-thirds in?
Uh, no, no, that's going over, that's going over the road.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, the road descends on the other side.
Okay, I was looking for...
Just so everyone knows, this is an old, old rendering that we have that we superimposed. This isn't, the bridge design changed a bit since then, but it gives you the general effect. And then we think that, you know, generally, you're going to be seeing this in a, obliquely as you cross the bridge, so the thinking of foreshortening, I think that Norbert is going to be really nice. So even though it seems a little attenuated when you look directly at it, in perspective, it will sort of come together. What else? We have been talking to a fabricator about these, and... We have been talking to a fabricator about these and confirmed all the technical aspects of it, the size and installation methods and the amount of depth that we can work with. And we'll continue to work, we'll actually provide something like a 3D model that can be used by a fabricator to create a mold.
That's right. We'll provide a digital template that they can build their CNC model from. And there'll be a review process during construction that we will partake in to ensure that the intent is upheld.
So then just to understand and repeat, the joints would be actually, the panel joints would actually be in the center of the trunks of the trees. And then the trees are actually, there are four different trees that then repeat. There's a left to right and then of each of them, so you get effectively four, four different trees. And of course, every time look at this, there's things we would do to make it a little better, but we'll do that. So I think the effect of the of the tree and then the canopy kind of blending and then integrating with the top of the cupings sort of makes the whole, you know, the whole piece read, you know, it makes it read all the way up to here. This is a cupstone.
Did I hear you just suggest you can work on this a little more?
Just a, no, just a tweak here and there. We have a shop drawing process.
You're not looking for feedback at this point, are you, or what are you?
Well, I think, I mean, we certainly, if there's feedback, certainly want to hear it.
So I just wanted to mention that since you're representing the evolution of the area over time, you know, which I really appreciate. It looks great. I love, you know, you're looking at a forested area and then an agricultural area and then a town. The other word, people lived here for a long time before, you know, certainly was forested, but, you know, it's all schoolkids learn in this area, but will not be inhabited in this area. So it might be nice to have a little, you know, just a little acknowledgement of, you know, in the in the forested area.
So my comment sounds incredibly insensitive after your reference stuff that you just landed, which my comment was the only thing that would make it more Norbert is a dog and a firework. Sounds incredibly insensitive.
You know what, but it's very apropos.
The evolution of?
The evolution, but it's been over 100 years. It's been part of our history. There are 75 years, yeah.
It looks beautiful. I should start with, it looks beautiful. Yeah, I'm really excited. And my second, my only comment is, well, I'm curious, Jeff, if Jeff Ellin has any concerns or comments about the upkeep and maintenance. But the second would be is if we could maybe borrow these to, I mean, I know it's in the meeting packet, but it's pretty powerful to see it as large.
It'd be great, yeah.
If we could maybe borrow these for a little bit and invite folks to come and take a look.
Or put in store windows.
That's exactly what I was going to say, put it on.
Store windows.
That's right.
It would be great to put, if we can find one that's wide enough, I would love to.
Or the library grand opening.
American Family Market windows put in there.
I assume these materials are power washable?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's what I was asking about the cleaning.
The lights at the, the lights at the top, will they be LED lights or?
They're LEDs.
LED and will we?
All fixtures are LED based.
LEDs, will we have the ability to change, change some of the colors for different LEDs? I don't know. I'm just thinking like the holidays and stuff.
Um, as, not presently, unless you were to apply a film or something to the bottom of the tube.
Something just, you know, for different occasions or make it, you know?
Yeah, we, these, these were, were selected just for, for a general wash on the facade and to, to provide some air of safety and lighting.
Yeah, of course, it's got to be safe, but it'd be nice if we could, I don't know, adjust it.
What I can say is that the light fixtures are, they can be twisted and angled
Okay.
to, to wash the facade and as, but.
Colors are what?
Colors.
Colors in order to do that, you need to have a.
Ideally, that would involve a light controller and totally different type of driver.
I will get to that.
I'm not confident that PENDOT would approve that since it's a pedestrian side.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure different colors are allowed.
Probably not in PENDOT's lexicon.
But sure, we'd be happy to leave these and it does, they're much more effective like this than it would be on a screen.
Yeah, I'm very pleased with the evolution between the original design that we approved and this one. This is a lot clearer, a lot more, a lot more character. The changes have been, have been good. I was going to make the same comment that Jim did about the Native Americans, so it'd be nice to have some sort of recognition.
Yeah, that's something we could.
But that is, yeah, and that is very striking. I like, I like the idea of putting this somewhere in the public and see it. So we'll, we'll brainstorm how to do that.
From Native Americans to dogs and pirates.
I do appreciate how the tree motif was brought out. It's an Iron Borough logo and, you know.
Original name of the borough.
Are these ours?
Well, they're, you know.
Some from close?
They were acquired by, yeah.
If you wanted to be an expert. A wish. A wish.
Okay.
And then we're going to like have the public buy bricks, right? Like as a fundraiser, something for the bridge.
Individual bricks?
Yeah.
Buy a brick?
I don't know about that.
Are the light pillars going to be as they are on the bottom or is it going to be closer to what it is on the top? Because it does appear to be different.
The color of the?
The lights, yes, they seem to be taller.
Yeah, this is.
Out further, so.
This is an old.
So it's going to be.
Be more like this one, yeah. This would be gray, that would be similar to the railing.
Yeah, the railing and the light fixtures and the fence thing is all fabricated from stainless steel.
Do you know how wide those sidewalks are or is it? Is that what you're saying?
It is.
It looks a lot different.
So it's.
I know that we.
Not these folks.
Yeah.
That is, that is a.
Were able to eliminate the Jersey barrier that used to be in the design early on. Thankfully went away. But that enabled the sidewalk to widen a little bit.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I can't speak to the record, but I believe that they're probably six to seven feet wide. We don't have a complete section through there. That's something we could send over to that in an email for confirmation.
And sidewalk, sidewalk widths are all part of the PENDOT bridge review and approval for pedestrian bike maintenance. So they have their minimum pedestrian standards that again incorporated into any new bridge. Whatever their minimum, six feet is what pops into my head right now is minimum.
And this does have varying widths as the, these piers, it's a little hard to see here actually step back. Sidewalk widens and then I guess it's narrowest between here and here and then widens up again at the ends.
So it gets wider at the top of the bridge?
No.
No.
No, it's wider than the base, wider than the base.
I know the new base is going to be wider than what we constantly have significantly, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Lots of scavenge, huh, please?
All right, let's settle down. We can move on to our consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. It's, it's great to see you guys.
It's really, it was great.
Can I have, yes, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Should I move for our council to approve consent agenda items A through C?
Any discussion of consent agenda? We are voting on consent agenda items A through C. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Consideration items. 10A is about the roof. Ari, you want to make?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, got it. I moved that Borough Council approved change order number four for the 80 Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $1,250 for a new contract total of $475,336.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Sir Ross?
So thank you, Mr. President. As was included in the meeting packet for tonight's meeting, I included an action item request that outlined this request. Essentially, there are some new wiring and some 20 amp receptacles that needed to be properly grounded and code compliant, which includes the cost of about 12, $1,250. I'm hoping that this is the last change where request as we are 95% of the way through the roof reinforcement project.
Any questions?
Just, do we have a sense of when this project will be completed?
Good question. I was going to talk about that in my manager's report, but now that it's on the table here, I might as well say that this afternoon, I added the most recent update to the 80 Windsor Ave Roof Reinforcement Project into the meeting packet. There's lots of details on there as where we are. We're looking at mid-July for the construction, for the roof reinforcement construction project to be completed. I'll also discuss later in this meeting, we're not going to open the building at that point yet because there's some weight, there's more that we're going to get into, some more maintenance-related repairs that we're going to be doing. It might extend it to closer to the end of July. And I'll talk about those details in a little bit. So we're looking at, we're 95% complete with the roof reinforcement project. That part of it, we are doing some maintenance repairs as well. And we're looking at worst-case scenario as of today, mid-July completion for the construction plan.
And that would be with the entire building? The Girl Scout room will not be able to put it? Okay.
Yes. I know there were some Fourth of July requests and unfortunately, it is an active construction zone and I'm not confident that it will be done by next week.
Okay.
You know, the following, in two weeks.
Okay. Just leave it.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote to approve change order number four for the 80 Windsor Ave Roof Reinforcement Project. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any unanimous? 10B. More roof reinforcement.
I moved, I moved that Borough Council approved payment number two for the 80 Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $80,453.60.
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay, Sir Ross?
Thank you, Mr. President. So once again, this is payment number two, self-explanatory. I'd like to draw council's attention to the pay request that was submitted from the contractor. It's going to look a little different than the motion that you had just approved, change order number four. You're going to see an additional change order number five on this payment request and it was rejected. So they submitted a change order request to the borough in consultation with the project manager and architect. We determined that their request should have been incorporated into their bid. So we rejected it. So this payment also includes that relocation ceiling vents, which was supposed to be included in the original bid.
Any other questions about this? Work has been done, I can attest to that. I had a tour. Seeing the progress. All right, we are voting to approve payment number two for the 80 Windsor Ave Roof Reinforcement Project. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thanks to our borough manager for diligently keeping an eye on these change orders and making sure that the borough is not overpaying for this project. That is unanimous, by the way. 10C.
I moved that Borough Council approved the final payment for the Regional Streetlight Permit Program Project in the amount of $19,279.88.
Seconded.
Seconded by Cindy, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. So 2021, the borough embarked on a project to replace all of its existing streetlights with LEDs. The first part of that project was to purchase the streetlights from PICO. Back in the day, the borough did not own its streetlights. They were all owned by PICO. So the borough, in order to switch them out to LED, we had to purchase them from PICO. Once the purchase was completed, we then contracted with Armor &amp; Sons to complete the retrofit and replacement of the LED streetlights that are existing today. So this payment request in front of you is the final closeout for this project. And in the time since we have received this request and have added this motion on to the agenda, we're still going to ask council to, for consideration this evening. But we're going to, staff is in the process of validating, cross-referencing both what the contractor has submitted and what was purchased from PICO. Since none of us were here during that process, we are taking some time to review that, all of the records just to make sure that everything that we paid for was done completely. So we're still asking for your approval and rest assured, we will not cut this check until staff believes that everything has been accounted for. I don't anticipate that that price would, that that exercise would result in an increase in price. So it will be, best case, less than that.
All right. I mean, when you put it that way, I'm a little uncomfortable with doing this now. And possibly this should be tabled until you have a, a number that you're confident in. Let's make, make the case for cutting this check now, for approving this now rather than later.
I didn't want to wait for an entire month to close it out when it's something that we could get done by the end of this week. It's a timing issue. Originally, I was thinking, oh, let's table it for a month. But then, talking internally, we're like, well, let's get approval so long as it's contingent upon staff reviewing it and approving it.
Okay. Doesn't look like council has a problem with this, so.
I mean, it's work that was already done or just?
Yes. Yeah, the problem is the work that wasn't done. That's what all this is.
And there have, right, and there had been instances where we have received a credit from Armor with work that has not been done. So if that's the other case, then worst-case scenario, we will get credit and that number will, will be lowered.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we are voting to approve final payment for the RSLPP project. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. 10D, fee schedule.
I moved that Borough Council adopt resolution 2024-11 to amend the 2024 fee schedule to include a 50% prorated two-hour zone parking permit fees effective July 1st, 2024.
Seconded. Seconded. Okay.
If I had 2020 hindsight, I would have designed a fee schedule back in 2023. They would have incorporated an update to the fee schedule effective July 1st, but, you know, a lot going on back then. So this is to reflect the updates to our parking restrictions as of July 1st, which indicate where it's a half, half price for the existing permits for four vehicles moving forward. So starting in 2025, you'll see on next year's fee schedule, those values will be doubled. So since we're starting in July, we're prorating it 50%. So, since we're starting in July, we're prorating it 50%. Also draw your attention to the $75 for the annual hangtag pass. We did not prorate that since that is going to be effective per, for one calendar year from the purchase price.
Okay. Questions here? That's the only change we're making.
That's the only change.
Remind me, how many of those $75 passes can be bought?
One per resell, one per household.
Yep. All right, voting on the updated fee schedule. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Let's move on to 10E, the Valley Forge TMA.
I move that Borough Council approves an annual partnership with Greater Valley Forge Transportation Management Association and contribute $500 towards the annual dues.
Seconded.
Okay.
This is a great opportunity for the borough to partner with the Transportation Management Association for Montgomery County. Greater Valley Forge TMA is one of the best TMAs in the region, and it would be a great idea for us to partner with them just on different transportation-related projects that we have. And they could help us advocate for those things that are most important for us. So, for a partnership fee of $500, my strong recommendation is it's well worth it, well worth the investment.
Correct.
I assume there are other municipalities?
Just about every municipality in Montgomery County. They are, and it goes beyond municipalities. And so, a TMA is really interesting in that you have municipal partners and you have private sector partners and you have political partners. And so, county commissioners, state reps, they're on the board. Folks from private sector engineering firms, they're also on the board. So, you have this really neat cross-pollination of members that really get, really makes a TMA effective in cooperation and community involvement.
They're partnered up with Lower Marion Township. They have, they partner with them to do their TDN policy, Transportation Demand Management policy.
And there was a nice little proposal that was included in tonight's meeting packet that just gives you a snapshot of what they do. And their website is worth a visit also. If you have the time.
We've had some, had some assistance from TMAs despite not being a member. We've managed to arrange that for the pop-up bike lanes that we did a few years back. And they were helpful in every way. Had some advice. Any other questions? Okay. We are voting to approve a partnership with the Greater Valley Forge TMA. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous again. Bridge changes. 10F.
I move that Borough Council approve a proposal for extended architectural construction documentation and revised construction administration services for the Norberth Avenue Bridge project.
That was a mouthful. Is there a second?
A second.
Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is to continue the architectural construction documentation and administration for the continuation and completion of the Norberth Avenue Bridge. VSBAs, as you saw earlier, has completed the design, I guess, almost completed the design of the mural. They have completed their work as of the original contract for professional services that was executed in 2010. So, they've been going at it for 14 years. And so, this is to enable us to make sure that what they designed gets incorporated into the bridge through construction. So, $65,200 will get us from this point all the way to the conclusion of the bridge being built. And yes, this is reimbursable. It is a reimbursable cost. Currently, 8015-5. We will be on the hook for 5% of this as of now.
In your opinion, this is a reasonable request on their part.
If you want that mural to be installed as designed, I would strongly encourage you to approve this contract because they will be onsite and make sure that all of the architectural details are incorporated throughout construction.
All right.
We're probably on the hook for about $3,200.
Yeah. That is the current split. It is a very pretty, a pretty freeze, I don't know what to call it. All right. We are voting on the extended architectural construction documentation and revised construction administrative services for the Norberth Bridge. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. It is unanimous. Budget amendment number one.
I move that Borough Council approve budget amendment number one to revise existing line items in the budget to better reflect existing conditions at a net change of $0.
Seconded.
Okay.
So, this is to set us up for a more efficient 2024 audit of the financial records. If you recall, the budget that was passed for 2024, there were two line items, if you're following at home. If you look at the budget versus actual report, under expenses, you're going to see two line items that don't have a budgeted amount. This budget amendment is to assign values to that as well as make some adjustments to current 2024 budgeted amounts. Really, what the driving factor behind this was the volunteer service tax credit that we provide for fire and EMS. And we had budgeted $26,000, and all of the rebates have already been issued, and we've only expended $18,600. And so, that's a significant savings there. Also, professional services, if you remember, the 2024 budget included $45,000, still $45,000 for professional services, which includes CPA to help support the audit, management services for the administration, as well as grants administration. Since you hired a borough manager as of January 1, my recommendation is to eliminate the management consultant from that line item, and we are halfway through the year, and we have not had the bandwidth to pursue any additional grants at this point. We have not spent money or invested money on anything having to do with grants administration. So, my recommendation is to cut that down to half of a year. So, eliminate those things, frees up over $23,000. You just start moving these numbers around, and the budget gets more accurate. So, it's a zero net change, and I've explained that in the action item request form that is included in tonight's meeting packet.
Questions on this budget change? Okay. Okay. I'm a little curious why the volunteer tax credit didn't come out the same. We have fewer volunteer firefighters this year who made the hours.
I believe there was an error in one of the previous year's tax process.
Just that much, okay.
That I didn't know about until after the budget was passed. It's an inflated number. It's helping us, though. It's okay.
Okay. We are voting on budget amendment number one. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. Let's move on to 10H, sale of borough property.
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2024-12 for the sale of a 2013 Ford Explorer for a final amount of $3,500.
Okay. Seconded. Seconded by Cindy.
So, if you recall, in March, council had a motion to approve the sale of, I believe, four or five borough vehicles. This was one of them. Unfortunately, this one never went through. The high bidder never showed up. The deal fell through. So, we re-advertized it, and this is the result of that re-advertising. Unfortunately, the numbers came in just about $600 less than what was previously bid in March, but it's still an acceptable number for what the vehicle is. $3,500.
A little surprised you get no-shows on like a government auction center. Seem that they're, you should be reliable entities.
Well, anybody.
It's not like Craigslist.
Okay, so.
It is like Craigslist, okay.
Municipalities are the ones that post things, but anybody can bid. So, anybody in the public can bid. It's not just, it's not just limited to municipalities bidding. It's anybody.
Interesting. Correct.
What is the website again?
Municity.
Oh, you went to the, it's. I was there, I was when I wrote it down, I just forgot.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to invest in it.
There are some crazy things on that site.
Like a salt spreader or something.
I could use a tractor.
I have sold, I have sold three dump truck loads of ground rubber mulch on municipal.
Wow.
So, yeah, you could sell anything.
Yeah. And there's, there's some fascinating stuff on that site. Yeah.
Tell me you didn't buy the mulch.
You know, anybody need any mulch?
All right, let's vote on Resolution 2024-12 for the sale of borough property. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Sell that truck. I waiver land.
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2024-13 for a waiver of the land development requirements for multi-family conversion proposal of the existing building located at 36 North Norberth Avenue.
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay.
So, this was a request for the landowner of 36 North Norberth Avenue to waive the formal land development process. The background behind it is that, again, the parcel is the little gym building itself. And what is being proposed is a conversion of that building from its current commercial use to an apartment building containing eight units. There is no exterior work that's proposed on the outside. In fact, the code was changed over last summer to allow this use in order to provide for adaptive reuse of existing buildings throughout the borough. Our SADO is somewhat unique in the aspect that it still requires there to be a land development process, which, again, would be submitting a plan set and having it reviewed for conversions of buildings into apartment units, even though there's no exterior work being done. I can't speak for planning commission, but I imagine that was probably done that way in order to provide and ensure that there's enough parking for those residents from changing from a commercial use to apartment building use. But currently, the applicant's attorney makes, is of the position that why the land development here really is just all done interior. And normally, it would have just been something that would be done through building permits. Building uses change all of the time in the borough, and they don't go through the land development process. It was reviewed by the borough professional consultants, including the zoning officer, the engineer, and myself, the solicitor. And I think we're essentially of the opinion that you're going to provide a plan that's not going to show anything because there isn't any site changes to it. So, it makes sense from a review process to proceed through the waiver route. However, our code does what otherwise required to go through land development. And this is sort of the unique property in that it would share the current public lot and along with the properties that were approved for what we'll call the 230 Hafford Avenue project previously. One of the requirements is that there would be a shared parking and access agreement between those properties. So, that lot would be required to be used for parking for all of those uses. So, that would provide sufficient parking, particularly for apartment use instead of a larger commercial use on the property.
And are zoning officers confirmed that the parking is satisfied?
Correct, as long as there's that shared parking agreement in place. One of the items that did bring staff concern early on was going through the other process, bicycle parking. But it's my understanding that the applicant is proposing bicycle parking standards as sufficient under zoning code. So, therefore, again, no need to provide for any exterior work that would be done inside. Of course, they would have to comply with all other borough codes, including the Norberth zoning code. I know that council has had some concerns about the ongoing work at 203 Hafford Avenue Forest, this being the same applicant. If a waiver was granted, a condition would be that, one, that they would have to complete their public improvements on those projects prior to obtaining the building permits. Because they still would have to obtain building permits for this work. So, they're not able to start working on this until the public improvements are satisfied to the borough's satisfaction from the Pinoni letters on those before then, again, they begin work on this. And also, speaking with Kevin Walsh, the building inspector, we provided language to his satisfaction that would have the applicant address the concerns related to the brick facade and ensure that that is done to the satisfaction or of the building inspector. And that being provided the necessary certifications from the independent masonry contractor that that work is sufficient and is repaired as that inspector would certify. I know those were items that were important to the borough, and again, that would certainly be addressed here. So, the building permits have worked with us on that until those are taken care of. Now, to be clear, that's not going to say that the whole building's inside have to be done, but with the public sees and what the public has to interact with, that would have to be done before work is commenced, which was not for the brick facade, for the public improvements. A similar condition was placed on the 230 Hafford Avenue as well. In addition, the applicant has voluntarily agreed that the new apartment units, when they are converted, will not be developed with natural gas hookups to service those apartments. Again, there wasn't really anything to tell them or they volunteered to do that as a condition of the waiver. And he's agreed to ensure that the public courtyard area that would be installed, that would be discussed pursuant to the 230 Hafford Avenue project, will have free public Wi-Fi for a minimum of five years whenever that comes on board, just to, again, create some livelihood to that general community. Again, it's a different parcel, but still shares the same facilities. And there will be that shared parking and access agreements between the properties. They still would have to pay all of the review fees for the project before the project, the building is occupied. Certainly, if there is any future development of that property, they would have to go through land development and obtain any other regulatory permits or approvals that they would have to obtain. And then, obviously, obtain the building permits and the occupancy permits in case there was any other interior renovations. So, they're making that request for the waiver of land development as a result of those conditions and as all the background of the situation. If it is approved, again, it wouldn't come back before council at all. Again, the next step would be obtaining the building permits to do that work, but again, that wouldn't be able to be pursued pursuant to the conditions until those public improvements and facade issues are addressed. And I know the applicant is here. This is Ruben, representative of James Craig, works with Bob Carroll, goes to McConner, is also a Norberth resident. So, if there's any questions related to this request, we're here to discuss.
Okay. It might be helpful for background for council because I think it was just the two of us at that time. At the start of COVID, Fred and I applied for an economic development grant, actually for public Wi-Fi, and really argued that economic development and community vibrancy really, public Wi-Fi is a critical infrastructure. We thought we made a compelling case, but we were not awarded those funds. We scored deplorably low, in fact, on the grid, rubric. But we did recognize that having folks have that ability, you know, specifically now that remote work has continued in a way that we did not anticipate that that truly has become a public infrastructure that we were unable to obtain as a municipality. You know, I think I could probably check. If you were Verizon, you would probably enthusiastically vote that you're a dead zone in Norberth and really don't have the ability to be connected downtown in peasant sands.
I mean, it's a problem because.
I mean, it, it's a problem because, for example, I try to use the parking app and I do have Verizon and I can't actually, you can't use the parking app. Like, it's totally dead, I literally have to cross the street to put money on the parking app. I don't know if anybody else is running into that problem, but I couldn't figure out what's going on. I realize.
My customers regularly have trouble, you know, using their phones. Yeah, I just wanted to point it out, we've tried to obtain this through municipal grants, unsuccessful.
So, this, I, my point is just, it's a public benefit to, to get that because it's not just like a nice app, it's actually, it'll be useful for our infrastructure and parking.
Questions for Mr.?
Fred, if I may have one question?
Go ahead, Aron.
So, perhaps it's too early for us to know, but is there some sense of how many units will be going in this building? And, you know, of what size?
I believe it's eight.
Eight.
Yeah. Do you know if they're single or double or whatever? I believe that the latest plan has pretty much even mix. Might be a few extra singles on the first floor. The layout's slightly different on the first floor than the second floor, but it's pretty much even mix with four on each floor.
Did you get that, Aron?
And, yeah, I got that, but so then I guess it, it's sort of implied by all of this that whatever parking, you know, requirements associated with that, that mix of units would have to be met. That's just built in, right?
Correct, and it was reviewed by our zoning officer and the municipal lot through a shared parking covenant that would be filed against both properties. We actually made it a condition that the council approved that 230, who's the same owner, enter into the agreement with the property for the little gym building in 36 North Narberth. So, between that covenant, that's where we require those properties in perpetuity to allow cross-parking, there is sufficient parking for apartment uses. And in fact, the apartment uses would result in less parking spaces that would be necessary than if it was to remain a commercial building. For example, if it was to become a gym or stay as a gym, that would likely take more parking spaces. Now, there would still be those spaces available, but it just would be more spaces for that use attributed to it.
But yeah, our zoning officer looked at the number of uses, the number of spaces that would be required from these apartments and added it to the number of spaces that are required for the commercial buildings, you know, at 230, going up there. Did the math and it does work. That is what he told us.
Right, but the part I'm a little confused about is if, if, if they're not submitting plans with a number of units, how, how would you know that?
Well, based upon the representation of how many units are going in, they are still gonna have to obtain occupancy permits for eight apartment units, if that's what they're going to do. And again, it is adaptive reuse of the existing building.
I mean, if he, if, if he provides a different number, it'll still have to work, right? I mean, zoning officer will still have to look at it.
Right, and again, it's an express condition that he remain compliant with zoning if something were to change then.
So, they could do less, not more. To be probably compliant with parking.
I mean, if, if they could do more and not change the outside of the building at all.
Right.
Provide for bicycle parking.
Right.
And provide for enough spaces on, for the shared uses of all those buildings. They could ideally do more, if this wouldn't prevent that from happening. But I'm assuming that math was done to figure out this.
All right, any other questions? Just like to thank Mr. Rubin for voluntarily accepting conditions that both fit the borough's climate goals and providing a public good for residents of the borough and probably for residents of your building. Thank you. All right, let's vote on 10I, the waiver of land development for 36 North Narberth. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And now the parking lot.
10J, unanimous. I move that council approval amendment from 2001 to the repurchase option agreement for the Haverford Avenue Municipal Parking Lot to be sold to RIR and Narberth Investors LLC for a price of $700,000.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy, okay.
So, this relates back to the, we'll call the Cook Lot Repurchase Option Agreement from 2001, where at that point in time, that then borough council provided the Cooks or their successors the right to repurchase that parking lot at a later time for an amount that was calculated, formula seven in the code. RIR Investors, Mr. Rubin did succeed to the Cooks' interest and did provide notice of their, their right to repurchase the lot pursuant to that agreement. As council knows, through the conditional use hearing and the land development plan approvals for the 230 Haverford property, there have been significant negotiations surrounding the borough's purchase of that lot, the purchase price of that lot, and continued use to a degree, to a limited extent, in the future of public spaces of, of that, of that lot. None of that was really identified in the original agreement from 2001, obviously. And, one, there are two terms. One, the repurchase price was not set out. So, this agreement would, one, amends the original agreement to, again, confirm that the parties have agreed on the $700,000 repurchase price, which is also the price that was set forward as a condition that was accepted for the condition these approval, approved by council. The other amendment is originally that conveyance was supposed to be done through a deed that was going to be executed, I believe, at the end of June. June 30th is when that deed was supposed to be recorded. It's obviously not gonna happen because of the negotiations and the ongoing work on this. So, what this will then do is amend that date to require a repurchase date of November 30th. So, that's when closing date, that $700,000 would have to be paid to the borough. And then that deed would have to be recorded prior to December 31st, 2024. At that repurchase date, the lot will remain in the condition as it is now with the borough maintaining control and leaders of all those spaces. Thereafter, after that November 30th date, again, the property formally changes hands from the borough and to Mr. Rubin, there, there is the remaining condition in the original 2001 agreement as it is with, again, ratified here, that that parking has to remain for the uses of the contiguous properties that surround the parking lot. The, this amendment also, again, ratifies the prior agreement that, in assuming that Mr. Rubin proceeds with that land development, at this point in time, there will be a right for the borough to maintain those 23-meter spaces for another three years. And that's, again, pursuant to Condition 14 of that Condition of Use Order. So, again, that's not really part of the amendment, but again, captured in here to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. So, that's a long way of saying that this agreement does two things. One, specifies the purchase price, and two, amends the date of the recording and when the, the closing date will occur.
And how does that date amendment affect the Park Mobile contract?
So, we, we looked, the Park Mobile contract's technically up in February, mid-February. The Park Mobile contract is drafted in a way that really doesn't specify a requirement for the borough to have, to my knowledge, a certain amount of spaces in a certain amount of area. We're still going to have the Park Mobile, well, we can terminate that Park Mobile contract if we wanted to. But moving forward, we can still maintain that Park Mobile contract with all of the other spaces throughout the borough. I would recommend, again, clarifying and having an amendment so there's no misunderstanding about that. But if, if Park Mobile wants to create an issue with that, we could just end the contract and enter to a new contract later, surely thereafter. So, there are some, some things that should be clarified with them, but I'm, I'm not concerned with creating a legal issue with Mark, with Park Mobile. And certainly, again, the difference is, is that the agreement actually technically has it going in June instead of November, so we're kind of closer to the end of Park Mobile.
We've, we've looked at the Park Mobile contract and we believe that we can turn off Park Mobile for any individual spaces that we'd like. We can just say, okay, as long as we don't acquire, as long as we, the borough, don't have another payment provider, you know, we can just take some spaces off of Park Mobile and just make them cash only. And that will, that is not a problem, that's provided for in our contract.
And, again, I've had conversations with Mr. Rubin's counsel. Again, there isn't anything written yet, but I think it's, I think within both parties' benefits that even after that November date, if Mr. Rubin's not going to be utilizing that property for his development, then I think the borough would be willing to enter into the license agreement with him to maintain that parking lot. So, we would pay insurance, we'd maintain the liability, we'd have to clear it until the time is that he's ready to forward with it. So, even after that time, practically, there may not be a change. I don't want to speak for Mr. Rubin on that. But again, that's something that we think will likely occur because it's, makes sense for both parties.
So, that, that would be yet to be negotiated? That would be a future amendment?
Correct, part of 230 Haverford, there's a number of license agreements trash, for example, that would, would start and that would just be one of the other things. At this point, we don't need it in place until after November 30th. But we think it, it shouldn't be hard to, to, to agree to basic terms on that.
One question, not, not knowing what the underlying option agreement says. Is, is time of the essence in terms of these deadlines? What, what's the contingency if, for whatever reason, Mr. Rubin doesn't pay the $700,000 or we don't close by December? Does it reopen the whole negotiation or is it?
No, but again, the, the $700,000 and the price is, is based upon this formula. If, if there's no closing, then there's no exchanging of the deed at that point in time.
But the formula doesn't, the formula isn't time sensitive, it doesn't change over.
I would say no, it doesn't. It, it wouldn't impact the original purchase option agreement.
Okay, I have a copy of this one. I mean, I would say that-
This is more of our firm's self.
John, the, the agreement does have annual interest payments, so if this were- If this were extended a long way, we, we might note that there are annual interest payments. But there's no, there's no, that, that agreement doesn't say what to do if, if there's no transition. I mean, I think we just own the parking lot.
The, the agreement, well, the agreement would seem to indicate that, again, that you would have a right in the agreement to not let the borough have any possession of it at all. So, sort of this gray area, continue to use after the purchase.
Okay. I was, and Tim, no, no reflection on your, your ability to pay. I don't want to imply that at all, so.
Due diligence. Any other questions? Yeah, the, the purchase price was determined primarily by this formula.
It's just lawyer and me, you know, because I didn't see the other lawyer.
A little bit of negotiation on that, but it's, it's almost all based on that formula.
Okay. I just think that was the formula was benchmarked to time frames. That's what I, I guess that was my only way of trying to figure that out.
So, no more questions? Let's vote on approving the First Amendment to the Repurchase Option Agreement for the Haverford Avenue Parking Lot. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Back to the small scale, LED streetlights.
I move that Borough Council approved the purchase and installation of LED streetlights along the 100th block of Dudley Avenue at a total estimated cost of $1,407.
Second. Okay, second, Mr. Spear.
So, this was a result of some great detective work by Councilmember Spear in support of some residents complaining about the lack of streetlight that was never reinstalled down on Dudley Avenue near Haverford. Thankfully, Councilmember Spear videotaped it at night to show how dark it got. It was quite effective. And so, apparently, there was a light there that was knocked down prior to the inventory when the LED streetlight project happened. And so, it was never captured in the LED streetlight repurchase. There was a light there, we, we street viewed it, Google Street View is an amazing tool. We street viewed it, saw that there was one there. And so, we are asking council to consider the purchase and installation of that missing streetlight for $1,400 and that will be included in our streetlight maintenance budget.
Can we dedicate the Jim Spear statement? It could be $1,450 for a class, $50 class.
You want to make an amendment?
Now, I'll just write it, I'll carve it in mine too, for free.
All right, discussion. It's good to have streetlights.
Thank you.
I'm glad that's only $1,400 for a streetlight.
It's got the pillar, it just doesn't have the-
It's just the lights.
Oh, oh, it's just the light, it's not the other thing.
The arm and the LED light.
Oh, so it was that great detective work.
Eaters could-
We are voting to secure Mr., no, we are voting to approve the purchase and installation of an LED streetlight along the 100th block of Dudley Avenue. All those in favor? Okay, more lights, it's unanimous. Stop sign.
I move that Borough Council approve the installation of an always stop at the intersection of Dudley and Price Avenue.
I would like to second this one.
Okay, the second.
So, this is a result of some extensive discovery and conversations at the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, for which resident came from your name, I'm sorry, has been in attendance and provided some really good feedback. And so, Public Health and Safety, if you remember, recommended the council approve the expense of our traffic engineer conducting a traffic safety study for this intersection. That traffic safety study came back and their recommendation is to install a four-way controlled stop. I also want to draw your attention to not only the attached memo from the borough's traffic engineer dated June 7th, but also look at the budget impact that by doing, if, if council approves this, based on our estimated cost of around $800 for all improvement, excuse me, the line item, roads, traffic control device, and street signs will be over budget by approximately $700. You might say, oh, my goodness, how many street signs have we been deploying? Remember, we made a major change to our two-hour parking zone and that has blown up our sign budget. So, yes, we are over budget because of this stop sign, but I don't, you know, my recommendation is to bring that to your attention, but I'm still recommending that Borough Council consider approving this.
Sounds like the primary reason for this stop sign is the lack of sightlines or difficult sightlines and no way to approve the sightlines.
There's also the expectation that, that those cars will stop because they expect it to be a four-way stop.
Of note, the traffic engineer noted several near misses as he was investigating this intersection.
Within a three-hour wait.
Yeah, which is, which was consistent with Dr. Stratt's own observations. I completely, it was amusing, I'm consistent.
It's, it's good that we have low speed limit, or, you know, that, that people don't speed like crazy through these intersections, so we're able to avoid the actual intersection. That's not good. Near, near misses aren't great.
Yeah, I mean, we did have neutral accidents.
Okay.
And speed, just to make it clear, like, the traffic engineer, it's like, speed is not the issue. You know, it's not that people are speeding through the intersection. So, it's really, as Jim said, it's expectations and sightlines. People think that the other person's gonna stop and so they go forward. Way to hear that problem is to put the extra stop signs there.
Discussion, Cindy?
No, no, I was voting yes.
All right, we're voting on installing an always stop at the intersection of Dudley and Price Avenue. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, it's unanimous. That has to go into our code too.
We'll also do a plaque with Joseph Stop Sign. After Joe Stop Sign.
Otherwise, uh...
Good, says north-south.
Okay. Final action item? An M?
I move that Borough Council approve the construction phase agreement with Amtrak for the Norbert Avenue Bridge project.
Second. This is a big deal. This is one of the major hurdles that we've been working on for the past several years. And I just wanted to say especially thank you to our project engineer, project manager Jesse Gormley from Pinoni, I believe is still online, to answer any questions that you have, to help us, you know, helping us shepherding this through, as well as thank the borough solicitor for reviewing this contract prior to it being finalized and his skill set to negotiate the reduction in, down from the 30% requirement, down payment from Amtrak, down to a much more manageable 10%. So kudos to everyone involved. This has been continuing to be a lot of work and a lot of details. And it's, I'm continuing to be amazed by how Jesse Gormley continues to manage this thing with the attention to detail, hats off. And this is a major step in the right direction. This is what we've been waiting for. This essentially puts the parameters on the borough getting the permission to construct the bridge over Amtrak's right-of-way. What this does not do, does not have any influence on our plan approval process. Our updated final, final, final plans have been forwarded, have been submitted to PennDOT as of Tuesday morning for final review. Once final review for the, once final approval is obtained from PennDOT, it then goes over into the PUC review. PUC reviews it. And then, once all of those things are completed, then we need to go back to Amtrak and get on their construction schedule. That is, those are the, I call them the big four things, right? This is the first of the big four. Then you've got plan approval, PUC approval, and construction time, or construction schedule. So this is the first step.
Can I ask Matt, can you or Jesse take what you just said and put it in an executive summary or an abstract or a graphic that's digestible for the public?
So, great segue. If you remember, we did one, an update for the bridge a month ago. And Jesse has actually provided an updated update for this week's newsletter that summarizes where we are today.
Great.
So that's, and that will be included in tomorrow's newsletter.
Perfect. And we will highlight that. That will be on the webpage. And you can say, because you really are describing a pathway that shows the complexity of this process in a way that I'm not able to narrate on, to a neighbor.
And if you remember, you might not remember off the top of your head, but if you do, could you remind us what the average bridge Amtrak project length is?
Fifteen to 20 years.
Or 14?
Yep. Depending upon what start date you define.
The average, that is crazy. Wow.
Yes.
It takes a long time.
I mean, assuming it actually gets...
All it needs is a card to vote to it.
The next three steps...
Oh, no.
For me, those are sequential, right? They're dependent on each other, so we have to do them in order.
There'll be, there is an updated project schedule that will be circulated to council as well as part of our bi-monthly meetings. So those are the big four. There are still probably minor points in between. Yes. One of which we saw earlier.
Right.
You know, they're, you know...
One of the more pleasant ones, sorry.
Connecting with other utilities, Comcast, Verizon, Eagle Electric.
What's the dollar amount on a 10% payment?
$735,000 estimated.
And that comes out of our...
We are responsible for that.
Right.
So as part of this construction agreement, well, that will be out of the capital funds. That, all of our bridge expenses are paid for out of Fund 30, which is capital fund segregated outside of general fund. We are on the hook for 735, estimated $735,000. That is our down payment. The good news, the bad news, the good news is that that is a reimbursable expense. We will get reimbursed for that $735,000. As it stands now, 5%.
Well, we'll pay 5%.
Yeah.
All by 5%.
We have to front $735,000. Then we get reimbursed.
All by 5%.
All by 5%. I would also encourage members of council to review the current draft tip for Pennsylvania, which is on DVRPC's website, and search for Norbert Avenue Bridge. Wink, wink, no, no.
What's that? Say it again?
Talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, just a plug.
And we, as I recall from the budget, we don't, literally, no pun intended, we don't have to take a breach allowance because we have enough money in the capital budget to front that money?
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
So we have, we, we've got options.
Okay, okay, options. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
We've got options. And so I am not in panic mode. I am, I am confident that we will be able to figure out some sort of payment arrangement with the, with the resources we have available to us right now.
I just remembered at the 30% level, we would probably have to borrow, so. So I was trying to remember where that threshold differs.
You remember, there is a general obligation note that was taken out last year, a year and a half ago, that we have not drawn down on, which was taken out for specifically this issue. It would be great if we wouldn't have to draw down on that for this fund, so.
Okay.
We won't, we won't need to find new bar. We won't need to...
For the bridge project?
Yeah.
Correct. I'm not going to make that statement based upon capital improvement plan.
For the bridge.
Right, in the immediate, if we want to be specific to the bridge, I'm confident that we will not be able to, that we will not be in a position to have to take additional funding. And if you have any other specific questions, Jesse is still online? If you want to get into the meeting.
Jesse, is there anything you want to add that's not covered by Matt's summary?
Greetings, everybody. My only note, actually a drawback from earlier, was the bridge sidewalk width is measured consistently at 7'4 3/4 inches.
Nice.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
I knew you were on it.
Any other questions for Matt or for Jesse?
Fine, thank you.
I'll note that it's good to be taking action here. Please, that you're getting to the point where we need to approve more bridge things. That's a, that's a good sign. All right. We're voting to approve the construction agreement with Amtrak for the Norbert Avenue Bridge project. All those in favor? Yeah. I hope there's really a buzz.
Imagine if one of you said no.
Just for the fun of it. Nobody's running for a question.
Yeah, thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Information edits. Matt, I understand you want to make your report?
Yeah, there's, monthly reports have been included in the meeting packet, including the manager's report, which I added earlier this afternoon. There's some more specific details about activities from the month of May. I wanted to draw council's attention to a couple of other things while I have your attention. First is just to continue thanking you to council for approving additional funding in the sewer fund. Your investments are paying dividends. Received a memo from Jeff Eldon, who is in, I'm not going to call it a thankless position because I think sometimes he enjoys doing it and he'll even tell you he enjoys doing it to review all of the sewer footage, all of the sewer video footage. Because what that enables him to do is identify locations of critical failure. And he has identified one already. That was the one that was approved in tonight's scheduled bills for Marion Avenue. And he's actually identified another one. And for those who are interested, I have a picture of it to look. After the meeting, if you want to see it, show you what the crack looks like. And what that enables the borough to do is to be proactive. We are not paying for emergency excavation when this has a critical failure. This is, it's functional, but it's going to fail critically soon. When you pay for emergency excavation, you're going to be paying for the notice. So this enables us to be proactive, schedule it in a time where we can schedule normal contractor rates. And it enables us to pinpoint issues before they become bigger problems. So again, thank you to Jeff for taking the time to monitor and review all of the sewer footage. It is not the most pleasant job at times, but I really appreciate his tenacity in it to identify these locations. And again, thank you to council and the mayor for approving a budget that had that increased amount for the televising and, if you remember, for the capital repairs. So all of these, I'm not asking for approval for expenses because all of these things are already covered in the budget that you passed for 2024. That's a testament to your foresight.
Are you allowed to say where that is?
Oh, yeah, 100 block of Marion. Thank you.
Okay.
100 block of Marion Avenue.
Okay. You know, I appreciate that we don't want to put photos of the sewage on like Facebook or Flash, or the Flash. However, they're powerful pictures. I mean, you don't have to be, I think the Director of Public Works, when Jeff showed me that picture, your radar says something does not look right. You know, this is what a 100-year-old deferred maintenance looks like on a sewer. So when we as council members have these conversations of, we are addressing decades of deferred maintenance and avoiding things that we would never do on our own house, like wait for the sewer pipe to explode. I do think those pictures are powerful and that communication of this is why we're doing capital improvement.
Maybe we could blow it up to just show the crack.
Yeah, I, it's important.
I will add this memo that he created. It was an internal memo to me just to explain what was going on. I'll add this to my manager's report to the meeting.
Yes, so we can refer folks, like, you know, why are we spending it? Take a look. You would be worried if this was your house.
Well, not to mention the public health. I mean, we talked about this before. Could we, you're literally putting sewage into, you know, stormwater, I don't know, possibly, and into our creeks and whatever. It's got to get dumped.
Oh, yeah, it's more, there are a lot more fun ways we could be spending money, but it would be irresponsible of us to continue, as you said, the can is rusted.
There is no more can debate.
There's no more kicking.
Yeah, that's right. Very good, thank you. I've got a couple more things I just wanted to bring to council's attention. I received Montgomery County is doing an update to their comprehensive plan, 2050 comprehensive plan. So there is a website, montgomerycounty.gov/montco2050, encouraging everybody on council, residents, mayor, everyone who's listening to take some time and review those materials and contribute to the survey. The last thing I'd like to talk about is ongoing repairs to AD Windsor. I am, it's been a pretty good week. There's just been really good news, you know, like the bridge is moving. We've got really good traction there, pun intended. And AD Windsor Ave, the roof reconstruction project is humming along. If you remember when council had the bid for the roof reinforcement project, the recommendation was for council not to award the bid for the maintenance items that were like repairing the cracks and painting and all those other things. We thought we could get a better price for it. In the time since the project started, and it also enabled me to have some more time to really assess what needed to be done from a maintenance standpoint in all three of those rooms that comprise AD Windsor. Give me some time, see what happens, see what happens as a result of the construction. Through that, we meet every other week with all of the stakeholders. We identified a laundry list of maintenance-related projects that need to be done in each of the three buildings. Through that, we have, I've partnered with the Norbert Borough Industrial Development Authority, David Burdons in particular, to think of this idea and how we can incentivize, create buy-in from the library users, AD Windsor, you know, the AD Windsor Avenue users. We've got the Girl Scouts, we've got the American Legion, we've got the library. We devised this idea, you know, I was talking to Dave, I said, you know, how can we leverage what the resources are for the Industrial Development Authority and support the borough projects? We devised this plan where if each of the contributing members would contribute an amount, the Industrial Development Authority would match that up to a certain amount. I'm pleased to announce that we are doing $25,000 worth of maintenance and the borough is on the hook for just less than $5,000. I want to give a special shout out to the Girl Scouts who have contributed, who have pledged $5,000. The Library Board, $5,000. And the Industrial Development Authority matching $5,000 each, a total of $10,000. That's a $20,000 contribution to the maintenance issues of AD Windsor Avenue. I'm really pleased with how collaborative of a process it has been. And hats off to everyone who's been involved in it. Hats off to council. There's a lot of hats coming off tonight. But that's just the kind of week I've had. And I just want to continue to say thank you. And I am planning on having a ribbon cutting once the project is done to show off everything that we've done and to show off your commitment to preserving a historic building in Norbert. It was a half a million dollar investment. You all should take credit for that. Not only that, you know, shine it up and make it look as good as it can be. So stay tuned for that.
Thanks, Matt.
And at one, and at that point, you know, all of the users will also be a part of that because they've been playing an active role in it, the Girl Scouts, libraries, especially. Thanks to everyone who's been involved.
We should plan to open house.
That, that's like my idea of having the ribbon cutting. Have all of the buildings open, have the opportunity, you know, have some speeches, open it up and then have the opportunity for folks to just walk in and see everything.
I have the Big Sippers.
See?
We talked, we talked about that in the committee. You're like, we have the Big Sippers. You know where they are, okay.
And that concludes my report.
All right, Matt, thank you. Any new business? Old business? Comments for the good of council?
Just reminding everyone to tell your friends and neighbors, take the Parks Survey, Parks Plan Visioning Survey. It's going to be up through September. Took a look at the summary statistics so far. We've got really robust, over 300 folks who have responded so far. Took a look at the summary statistics in terms of areas for improvement, in terms of getting more responses from groups that haven't had as a robust response on the average. And it's generally folks who are younger, 30s, 20s, teens, communities of color, and renters. So just generally overall, tell your friends and neighbors and especially if you have any ideas in terms of helping get outreach to some of the communities that haven't responded at the same rate as other groups as well.
Is there a QR code at the courts and the skate, and skate park?
Uh, QR code, say, say that one more time.
Is there a QR code for the survey at the skate park and the courts?
That is, I think there's only one at Norbert Park. That's a great idea in terms of getting one placed in those areas specifically.
And we should get, put it on Danny's radar for the concerts.
I've connected with Danny and he said that we can make an announcement at the top of the hour on the, at the concert.
I was, QR code will go here.
Yeah.
The video.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Do we have a QR code downstairs in the, in the window of the office or something?
Yeah, as you walk in.
It's funny when you walk in, there's like four QR codes for each of our major things we have.
Yeah, they're in all the kiosks. They're all over.
Okay, great, great.
By the train station.
Yep.
Fourth of July.
Yeah. It is quite long of a survey, so it'd be hard to do it. You're walking off the Fourth of July.
We could if, during the day, if somebody wants to man the table or something.
No, I mean, do you want to talk about promote Fourth of July?
Oh, Fourth of July, so, yes, so, yeah. Fourth of July is coming up. Again, we need, thank you to all those who've already signed up to volunteer. We could use more hands, especially second shift of the day. And in the evening, we particularly need a couple, couple hands to help out. Please ask, you know, anybody that you know who may be able to jump in and give us an hour or two. And it just creates the magic, that community creates the magic. And being part of it is so important. Fundraising is going very well. We can always use more to... Fundraising is going very well, we can always use more to make sure that this event continues into the future. So, but so far, people have been pretty generous and I thank all those who have been so generous.
And they don't have to be Norworth residents to volunteer, so.
Oh, no, 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 no. There is a signup genius, a genius that I have posted multiple times. If anybody has questions or to find it, direct them my way and I'll, I'll get them to the right site.
Okay, any other comments for the good of council?
Happy summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Longest day.
Yeah.
All right. We just ended the hot day like.
It's already done.
All downhill from here.
And we will be meeting in executive session.
Right, we'll be meeting in executive session to discuss the lease renewal for a tenant at 201 Sabine Avenue. We will not resume session after. We will not be resuming session after the executive session. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, voting to adjourn, they're returning, we're returning into exec session.
When you break, you're fine.